All right, it is four minutes after six. I will now call to order the June 8th, 2015 meeting of the East Hampton Conservation Commission. Meeting is being recorded. There's sign-in lists going around. Keep it moving and hand it to anyone new that might come in, that'd be great. Are there any public concerns, non-agenda items? All right. We'll move on to a public hearing for a notice of intent. Mass D E P file number 151283 filed by Lathrop Retirement Community of East Hampton, 100 Bassett Brook Drive regarding invasive plant species management activities within bordering vegetated wetland in 100-foot buckers inn. That's us. That's you. Please come forward, join us, and make your presentation. And please introduce yourself for the record.
My name is Barbara Walvoord. I am the chair of the Lathrop Communities. I'm a resident. We have a committee of 12 people. Three other committee members are here with me tonight, and they are Sharon Grace.
If you speak, I'll get you.
And Lynn Howe and Roger Herman. And we'll have to just say a word or two in a minute. And we also have Joan Deely, who is representing our contractor for the removal of invasive plants. She's with Polaton Ecological Services. And she'll speak also and be able to answer technical questions about the methods that they're going to use. So basically, if you wish, I'll just speak for like two or three minutes and kind of summarize our project, or do you want to move straight to questions? What do you want to do? Please go ahead and tell us what you have in mind. Okay, what we have in mind. We have 177 acres on the East Hampton campus, Lathrop. And I don't know, I suppose about 35 of them are built on, the rest are open land. It's forest, fields, meadows, pools, streams. And when Sharon and I moved there two years ago, some work had already been done, but we saw, because we had had experience in a previous property, we saw that invasive plants were moving in. It wasn't hopeless. It's not like some other land in East Hampton that we all could name, where it's just a total jungle of invasives, but they were definitely coming in, and all the usual suspects. So multiflora rose, bush honeysuckle, buckthorn, we know all the suspects. And so we got together a committee, it's now 12 people. We work very closely with management. They know we're here tonight, and they're fully supportive of our efforts. We've gotten a grant to help pay for our work. We've also matched the grant funds with money that we've raised from residents. And so our plan, as detailed in our application, and Joan will answer the technical details about it, our plan is to remove invasive plants on our land. We won't be able to do all the acres right this minute, but we're seeking permission to remove invasives on this land, remove foliage as we can. We have the money and the contract to do a good piece of it.
Do you have the contractor?
Yes, the contractor is Polaton Ecological Services, and Joan is here representing them. We've also worked with three different consultants. One is Lori Sanders, who I think you know, very well-known naturalist in the area. She inventoried our land and gave us advice about what the priority areas should be for removal of invasives and different possible ways to go about it, uses of our land. And then there were also a couple of other consultants that we engaged in 2014, and we came up then with a long-range plan for management of our natural lands. So I want Lynn and Roger and Sharon just to say a word or two about the commitment of the committee and the long-range, kind of the long-range possibilities of keeping this going.
Sharon, you want to begin?
Sure. This is Sharon Grace. The last name is Grace.
Yes, well, as Barbara said, when we moved in and saw the invasives coming in, we wanted to, and saw that it wasn't as hopeless as it had been on a piece of property that we owned before, that we wanted to become involved with clearing those out as quickly as we could, so that it didn't become totally overgrown. We didn't want to live there and see all these invasive plants just moving in and spreading out and taking over the woods. So that's how, I guess, my involvement with the committee is to stay involved with that.
Lynn, this is Lynn Howe, H O W E, and her first name is Lynn, L Y N.
Yeah, so I'm a resident. I moved here before Sharon and Barbara moved in, and I just got more and more engaged the more I heard about it. And I must say, this is a very active committee, and people have been really committed. There's a lot of energy there among the people. I feel that I've learned a lot from your information and activity, and it's sort of a focus of action, I would say, in our community right now.
This is Roger Herman, is next. H E R M A N.
Roger Herman. I was here in January at night when it was too cold to get out of the car. Everyone was very cordial, and we followed up, obviously, on your directions and advice. And I just want to say I'm very eager and willing to be a steward of this land that we've been, that we will be working on, because we all know that invasives have a way of returning, and we want to keep an eye out for them.
And then this is Joan Deely from Polaton Ecological Services. And Joan can speak for a little bit and answer questions about the exact methods that the contractor will use. Let me add that thousands of invasive plants have been already removed by, from non-wetland areas by our volunteers. So we really have a very involved committee, and they've been out there hacking away at honeysuckle, pulling out garlic mustard. But now we need, we really need Polaton Ecological Services, so Joan.
We started working on this property last year, and we've already, as Barbara said, we've also done some work in uplands, but there's two spots in particular that were those jurisdictional wetlands, which is why we filed the NOI and need to follow the order of conditions that you have given us. We, when we work in these areas, we follow the protocol that is laid out in this national grid. Right-of-way work, we're within 10 feet of jurisdictional wetland. We don't use any herbicides. We do only handwork. And then beyond that, we use only glyphosate, which is a sensitive area herbicide that's allowed to be used in wetland areas. And in this two places, a lot of what we're going to be doing, I believe, is cut stump work, which, if you're familiar with the process, you cut the shrubs and paint the herbicide ground on the stump, so it's very targeted, and then very limited foliar work for the lower stuff that's growing on the ground. It is too small to be treated that way. And then, yeah, those are the only two places, because the, this one smaller wetland that's along this walking trail is largely bittersweet. It's a huge, extremely unpleasant tangle, bittersweet. And then along this field edge is a lot of multiflora rose and also bittersweet that's growing up into trees, so a lot of that's very well-suited to the cut stump work. And that's all I can say right now, unless you have questions. Or I'll be happy to answer your questions, actually.
So I'm interested in the work that was quantified in the wetland area, and if you could describe that a little, where we don't use. Where, I'm assuming that would be, because that's obviously within that 10-foot zone, that that would be all hand-pulling?
Hand-pulling, mostly hand-pulling, and depending on the wishes of a commission, we can do hand wiping with, you know, you put an herbicide on a glove and wipe the leaves.
So very discreet application?
Yeah. Some commissions allow that, and others don't. Or, and it has to be, and then everything else has to be mechanically removed.
So the wetland area where you'll be working within the boundary, what is the, what are the general characteristics of that wetland itself? If you can revisit that.
This, the one along the trail is a bit of a depression, and I think it has standing water. Is that the place where you think it might be? A vernal pool? Yeah, but it hasn't, it's not been certified. So in the late, later on in the year, it would likely be dry, which is a good thing. And then the other place along, where the, this upper piece here, that's mostly, it's along a field edge, so it's mostly kind of a wet meadow, rather than, you know, a pool or a stream or anything.
Do other people have questions they want to ask?
Yep. You said, talked about mechanical, sorry, that ain't your question. Did I talk about mechanical methods? Mechanical methods?
We have weed mowers and honeysuckle poppers, which is another thing that goes under the root and gets something out. Machetes, brushstrokes.
It's not actually machine tire?
No.
No equipment you're bringing down there?
No, no, not in this context. It's not really needed.
Okay.
How do you dispose of the vegetated matter?
That we need to, we, we decide.
We talked about chipping some of it, but we decided not to spend our money on that. We just leave it there.
And just desiccate and forms a nice brush.
If the landowners agrees, we just will pile it somewhat out of sight. We can cut it up a little bit so it decomposes faster. But it would be, in the case of this place here, it would be away from this depression. We're not going to throw the depression down. And depending on the time of year, too, the, especially the bittersweet, we might want to take it away, because it's going to have berries on it.
Uh-huh.
If we do it earlier in the season, we wouldn't have to do that.
So the timing is still to be determined?
We're hoping to work in June, which would be better for things not having fruits on them.
And then you mentioned the long-term management component? So you're going to do this initial clearing, removal of invasives, and then what is the long-term management piece?
We do two years of follow-up after the initial, and then treatments, that'd be 2016, 2017. And then we are committed to working with the Lathrop Land Management Committee to provide training, if they would like, in other ways beyond them, what they're doing now, to, so that they can train their volunteers in the future to do that. And Barbara and Sharon and Lynn and Roger are not to be trifled with when it comes to, you know, follow-through. They're very committed, they're very dedicated, so I don't, it's not like a context where we'd be worried about finding volunteers to do that kind of management work. And if they need us to come back to do stewardship-level touching up of things that are not looking too good, we can work that out with them. But mostly it's going to be in their hands, their capable hands.
And that's what Roger was talking about when he said he's already volunteered to be a steward, and so have several others. And we've had some experience in this, because we've had volunteer workdays for our residents, where we take them out into upland areas, and if they don't know what an invasive honeysuckle or an invasive multiflora rose looks like, we show them how to identify it. We did garlic mustard code recently. And so, you know, people learn how to identify these plants, and then they go after them. We use, with the volunteers, we use only hand methods and only in uplands, but, so, you know, people learn. If you can teach people to learn, if you can teach people to identify the 10 most dangerous invasives, they can do some monitoring of the land, and, you know, so Roger has this field, and Sharon has this meadow, and do it like that.
Does anyone else want to do a site visit, to see these areas? Anyone else? Does anyone want to do a site visit? You going to do? Kind of don't.
Do.
Do.
I think we should. I know I should.
All right. So how's everyone for next Monday?
Sure.
Okay, so what time?
Six, 5:30. We'll do 5:30. Let's do six, five.
Okay. We would like to do a site visit to see this in person, and we'd like to do it next Monday, the 15th, at 6:00 PM. Is there a good congregating location?
100 Bassett Brook Drive, which is the end.
Where, all the way at the end?
Yeah. It's not all the way in, but the inn, the big building there.
So are we pressed to all park?
Yes.
Yeah, it's plenty of parking.
At 6:00 PM.
Especially at 6:00 PM. As long as Bridge Club isn't there.
All right.
I have a random question. This is not rated. What is, what is Lathrop Community? Is that a retirement community?
We have about 100 units on that campus, some in townhomes and some apartments in the inn.
All right. And we did it. Awesome.
So can I motion to continue this to June 22nd at 6:00 PM?
I'll make a motion to continue to June 22nd at 6:00 PM.
Second.
All is in favor? Yes. Bye.
So what does continue to June 22nd mean?
Because we want to do a site visit, we will resume discussion of, we'll reopen the public hearing at our June 22nd meeting, and resolve whatever outstanding comments there are, if any, and see where it takes us from there.
All right. And someone will be in touch with us about what you might like to see when you come?
We'd like to see the, I mean, I'd like to see the two areas in our jurisdiction, basically, especially the wetlands. So the wetlands, the one along the trail that might be a vernal pool, and the wetland along the field edge, that wet meadow area.
Anything that's within our jurisdiction, that's all we really.
And who's the best contact and contact number in case of any last-minute changes?
It would be me.
Okay.
I think I want to be in town. Yeah. Barbara Walvoord, W A L V O O R D, at 413-203-5086. And let me give you also my cellphone, 574-361-3857.
Great. I doubt I'll need to use them, but just in case anything last-minute comes up, I want, I'm waiting around.
Okay. All right. There you go.
Thank you all very much. Tonight, we'll see you next week. Next on the agenda is a request for determination of applicability filed by Bell Atlantic Mobile of Massachusetts Corp., doing business as Verizon Wireless for 51 Brook Street, construction of a monopole wireless telecommunications facility, gravel access and associated facility improvements. And, good evening.
Good evening.
If you, at some point, could take a moment and sign in?
I do.
Oh, you did. You both did?
No, I haven't.
Okay. Jess, can you sign in? Thank you. Thank you. We do need our easel. All right. Thank you.
Your coworkers.
Colleagues. I haven't seen it. It was more to this amount.
I didn't see that. The attachment wasn't there.
Oh, dear. Okay.
Well, we had the paper, we didn't have the drawing. We had the, the RDA we had.
Two attachments.
Yeah.
For this project or the previous one?
Both.
Previous one. The previous one he was asking about. But there was no drawing.
Maybe that's a problem.
January, January. No, it was more recent. Hello?
Good evening.
Please introduce yourself.
Good evening, everyone. My name's Dean Gustafson. I'm a senior wireless scientist with All Points Technology. I'm here tonight on behalf of Bell Atlantic Mobile of Massachusetts, doing business as Verizon Wireless for a proposed wireless communications facility at 51 Brook Street. What Verizon is proposing at this property, which will over 19 acres, it's a residential lot, in the northeast portion of the site, proposing a 100-foot monopole wireless communications facility. I'm just wanting to do, this is essentially, this is the end of Brook Street, where the paved section ends, and there's a gravel drive that leads out to soccer fields out back. So we're proposing an access drive between the residence and the barn, swinging around, picking up a section of Brook Street, and then deviating off of that. It's all 12-foot wide gravel access drive to a 50-by-50 fenced-in compound gravel base facility, houses monopole as well as a 12-by-24-foot prefab concrete shelter that'll house Verizon's wireless ground equipment. The resources that are located in proximity to the project on the subject property include border vegetated wetlands, highlighting in green here. The bank is a small intermittent water course channel that bleeds out of that system, that eventually drains down to Broad Brook. Highlighted in yellow is the 100-foot buffer zone, and this red line denotes, is associated with the zoning requirement to show the top of slope in excess of 15%. We're approximately 136 feet away from the nearest point of the border vegetated wetlands, that wetland flag, 1-11. And part of this, this BBW resource, this tail end, is impounded by kind of an earthen dam, shallow earthen dam. And in that pool area, there were some spotted salamander egg masses, so it's functioning somewhat as a vernal pool habitat as well. So the proposed work will be located outside of all the resource areas, including buffer zone, and therefore we're requesting a negative determination from the commission, that there are no activities under the Wetland Protection Act regulations. With that, open to any questions?
So that slope there, that's an existing slope, and it's just steep down in the river right now, basically?
Yep. Yeah, this is all forested, existing forested habitat, fairly mature pine-dominated forest. And also along this slope, eventually you can see WEMCO has a transmission line that runs through here, so obviously underneath that, the clearance zone, that's all kind of grass or structure up out of that.
And what's the vegetation like now on the, kind of the flat area on top? I'm just trying to orient myself with the.
Where the proposed facility is going?
Yeah.
It's a mature pine forest.
Oh, okay. I get you. All right.
Here's a picture that just, you know, a real shot that was part of their package.
Gotcha. Okay. Yeah, so there really is no activity in the 100-foot bunker?
No.
Yep. That's amazing.
Well, it's a nice level area. You know, we identified, I went on the design visit last year with the project team, so we actually picked out this location before we even knew where the, we were approximate to those wetlands. So, but we definitely wanted to make sure we're away, far enough away from that steep slope edge, so that, you know, we wouldn't create any issues during construction as far as erosion down that slope. And it's fairly short access off kind of an existing gravel portion of Brook Street.
And where are your erosion control measures? Are they shown on this map?
They're not shown on this map, but essentially all of, the entire, it would be the eastern side of the facility and access road, there will be erosion controls located along there.
Is that on a drawing that was part of this middle, or?
It's a good question. I'm not sure it made it onto the set that was submitted, but we could certainly follow up for your records to clearly identify the E and S controls.
So the thing that we just need to be, that it's not in our jurisdiction? It's not in our jurisdiction?
So this is actually not a good question?
You know, the only caveat to that is that, you know, even if something were to happen that affected that slope, that affected the wetland, then it would, after the fact, become our jurisdiction. It's only when something's.
That would be an enforcement error at that point.
But they're going to include erosion mitigation controls, I think, as general would have.
Yes, definitely will.
So.
And typically when we're, Verizon Wireless is very sensitive to working approximated to wetland resources, and certainly there's a little heightened sensitivity for this one for some vernal pool habitat, breeding habitat. I've worked for Verizon Wireless for over 16 years, and have, you know, done everything from identifying wetland resources to protection during construction. And typically, if we're located this close to wetlands, we'll, just as a third-party review, we'll do a review of the erosion controls before construction begins, just to make sure everything's installed properly. And particularly because we're close to a fairly steep slope, that way we can avoid any potential regulatory issues after the fact. So that's going to be where I recommend it to the, to the development team as we proceed in that manner on this site as well, just, just to make sure, I mean, they use, they have pre-selected contractors for Verizon, and I've worked with all of them, they're all very, very good, but even good contractors sometimes, you know, make mistakes here and there.
That would anyone, if don't have the paperwork with me tonight, but we will have it signed by our next meeting. Would anyone care to make a motion?
Is it anyone in the audience for this particular project?
Are there any public comments?
What's the access to Off Brook Street? Which, is it at the far end?
Yeah, the access, the commission's, okay, I'm just going to turn this around and make it easier. This is the end of Brook Street. So this is the end of where the pavement ends, and then it goes into the woods, it's a gravel surface, access, and the soccer fields are back here. So we're going to be coming off the end of there, essentially through the driveway to 51 Brook Street, pass between the house and barn, build a new access road, jump on to Brook Street, the gravel section of Brook Street, and then peel off to get access to the facility location.
John, this also will go before the planning board as well. This also is going before the planning board as well, this application. It's already been to the Z B A. It's now before the Conservation Commission, and it's also coming to the planning board. So just so you know, there's, there'll be more about the site plan aspect of it, because the access isn't necessarily their jurisdiction.
So it's not anywhere near the athletic fields or anything like that?
The athletic, this is their northern parcel boundary. The athletic fields are, start maybe 100 feet north of that corner, but you're getting close to the forest edge, you know, essentially the wood line is probably right to draw it in, it would be somewhere up in here.
Jess, when is this on the planning board agenda?
It'll be on the 23rd.
That's the day after our next meeting?
Not tomorrow's meeting, but two weeks from now, so I think that's the 23rd.
So it's not really going to be any disruptive to anything, right?
I don't know. I'll find out during the planning.
With that, would anyone care to make?
I'll move to issue a native termination of applicability that the work is not in an area subject to our jurisdiction.
Tuck in. All is in favor?
All right. Removed.
Thank you both.
And you will now be, assuming the original topic to.
If you can send it, if you could send it to me directly. If you can send it, if you could send it to me directly?
Yeah.
Your information, the card? Or is it on the app?
It's on the app, but I'll give you the card as well.
It's on the application, but if you want to do that too, that's fine.
Do any one of these for our file?
Yeah, if you send it to Niana Easter Drive in East Harbor, it'll probably go into a circular file. So I'll make sure it gets to the project team and the construction manager.
Okay.
Should I put anything in here?
No, just leave the place right there.
I can give you a different address to send it to.
I didn't start taking it.
This laptop is driving me insane tonight. Insane, is that what you're doing?
Yeah. Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you, folks.
Thank you very much, Dean.
Thanks for using your easel.
Our pleasure.
That would be what is there for? Easel shining there. A little bit of trouble. Getting rid of a little bit.
I know, okay to continue.
Have a great night, folks.
Thank you. All right. Next on the agenda, request for certificate of compliance, first one filed by James La Grand for 19 River Street, septic system upgrade EP file number 151281. Hello, Mr. La Grand.
Hello.
Welcome back.
Thank you. So I took some pictures yesterday. Just the back three pages, to show how the grass is coming in.
Not too bad, considering the season.
My wife has been there, sprinkling it quite regularly, so.
At least my husband.
So that's the field side, and then, this is in front of the house, and this is where the old system was down there, so. That one actually came in the desk, because it was in the shade.
Excellent. All right.
Maybe I just want to see that one.
It was down the river, it was much smaller, so.
James, then our eyes.
Take the yard.
Hello.
You know what version of the control measures are?
They're all removed, this one, right?
Like in old school. You heard that, and they're all around.
It was 55 gallon drum, in the ground, two of them.
Two, two of them.
But there was a pipe between them, it was plugged, so, in effect, it was actually only one.
A single.
So it's awesome.
Sure, that's a type of technology.
I mean, we can flush the toilet now, and we can actually take a shower, and it's amazing.
Wow. Global water thing.
No, no more, no more.
Fascinating water nature within.
All right, any, any questions, comments?
No questions.
All right. Would anyone care to make a motion to issue a certificate of compliance?
I'll make a motion to issue a certificate of compliance for 19 River Street.
A second?
All in favor? So moved. We'll have your paperwork for you signed and sent it out to you after our next meeting.
Sure. And then do I take that to the registry?
Right, exactly. And then that basically cancels out the order, and the title's all clear.
Perfect.
Excellent. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. La Grand. You signed in, right?
The sheet's here, do you want it?
Oh, yeah, we could pass that back up. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's a Master and Commander quote, I guess. That's a Master and Commander quote, I guess.
I'm sorry.
I read all like 20 whatever books at one point.
I'm sorry.
What's that?
Okay, next on the agenda is a request for certificate of compliance, Biscoma Conservation Trust for care at Brook Conservation Area culvert replacement DEP file number 151280. Hello.
Hey.
Hello.
It's us, finally.
Come on up, it's your turn, we've been moving right along.
No, that's right.
If you could just introduce yourself for the record?
Okay.
And then, start talking.
How fast? My name is Bill Cannon, a landscape architect, I'm filling in for Mark Reed from Harry Surveys, who I've been kind of working in tandem on this project. Sitting with me is the president of Biscoma Conservation Trust, John Bader. Always loves to be in attendance for moral support, whatever.
Yeah, I don't know anything about the projects.
So, and, and so what I'm going to try to do tonight is just kind of follow up on, on the request for the certificate of compliance. I understand Mark Reed has filed it, I have a copy of it here, it's been submitted to the Conservation Commission, and he has basically certified that all the work has been done in compliance with the plans, and I believe he's submitted photographs of it. I mean, he's, he's done inspections, weekly inspections all along.
You have been very on top of those.
He's been very diligent and everything else. I talked him into giving us a little bit of a break during the winter time, however, since there wasn't any activity going on, and we picked it up in the spring to finish it, and we were just kind of on it to kind of finish it up and everything else. Based on what I've seen out there, and I've been out on a number of occasions to kind of hold the contractor's hand to get it implemented the way that I kind of envision it, and, you know, working with the trust to kind of make it, you know, work out there as well. Sometimes the plans are subject to a little bit of tweaking. Tweaking, or, you know, understanding and everything else, so, you know, we, we modified a couple of things, they're represented on the as-built plan that was submitted, which is, you know, which was requested by the order conditions, based on my observations and everything else, so that was followed up with the certificate request for the certificate of compliance as well. So, I guess, I guess we're looking for that certificate of compliance, because what we, our motive is that we would like to submit a notice of intent for kind of like the phase two, if you will, of the project. You know, way back when, we kind of made a presentation about this whole vision for the property that kind of extended from East Green Street, where this access is all the way over to East Street. And on East Street, what we want to do is create some accessibility, a little bit of parking, accessibility, handicap accessibility, and we want to create a trail from that parking area through the open fields. Some of that would kind of connect up with this access point, and, you know, be a good, good thing for the whole, the whole area, residential area out there.
There's a little culvert to work on, on that.
Yeah, I mean, I can, I, we can get into the notice of intent if you want, but I don't, you know.
Not tonight.
No, I didn't think so. I do have, I've got the notice of intent here, it's been submitted to you via electronic, but, so it was just the one copy here.
Okay.
But, I think you got...
When was the notice of intent submitted?
When was it? Email?
I believe Friday.
We'll go back into email and check.
I looked at it for today. All right, okay.
I believe I may have been CC'd, so let me look at my email. You guys are definitely having some email issues.
We're full.
Right, so we need to, we need to talk to the IT person about moving some of that stuff off somehow, because constituents are having a hard time contacting you.
I didn't even realize we were full, so when I went on there, about a week ago, I deleted a ton of stuff.
You did.
Now it's down to like 75% now.
Okay, well, that's good.
Full, so we have some bucket.
Okay, well, that's good.
All right, but I don't know, I don't recall seeing that.
And that was before?
That was, yeah, like mid-last week.
Yeah, stories of that total?
Not enough.
Like, would one, would one project put it over?
No.
If it's like 20 or...
Oh, one, yeah.
Theory could.
In theory, if the files were, if the files had, yeah, would, obviously.
If the pictures were too large.
So, back to topic at hand.
Right.
Commission did a site visit.
June 1st.
June 1st, thank you. And there was one area of concern. And you have a photo of it right there? It's basically a nearly vertical soil face.
Okay.
This wall here that we're slanting.
Right.
We're concerned on what's going to grow on that and the different stuff.
Right, yeah. Yeah, it's steep and bare right now, so it seems like, you know, it could have some erosion potential there, just with stream flows and flow coming off the top of the slope and such, and, so...
I guess, what's the plan for that face? How, how is that, how do you envision that becoming regurgitated, otherwise stable? Because it, it looks like just soil right now.
Right, yeah. Yeah, well, Bill and I talked about that, you know, I had a concern about that too.
Okay. What'd you come up with?
Nothing solid, you know, but I did suggest a couple things. One would be, something's got to go in, in there, you know, to fill it in, and it's pretty hard to put some kind of a soil base back there right now. You might want, the only thing I could come up with was like bales of hay with wooden stakes on the top, and then throw some soil on top of that, eventually, you know, or you can see, throw some, some kind of seed on top of that, or something that can take, and eventually fill it in. Otherwise, you'd have to go through a whole construction process.
It's hard, it's hard angle to see it, but...
I mean, that'd be a lot like using core logs or whatever, to...
Right. What about tublings? Some sort of, are you familiar with that? Instead of like a dormant live stake, an actual, you know, because it's not the right time of year for that, like a tubing or something that gets literally plugged in?
Plug, plug, yeah.
That would perhaps jumpstart it.
Well, I, I think, I, just to give you a little bit, John and I, when we, when we looked at the area, and he voices concern about it, what I wanted to do was to get back to the commission first, before we went and did anything that would have been foreign and objectionable to you. And, and rather, just kind of talk, talk to you about what we could kind of do. I, I think, rather, and I didn't want to get the contractor, quite frankly, involved in, in doing something, because I think they would make more of a mess than it was worth, and also, I want to kind of keep the expense down on it, too. But I would like to see, I mean, even I, I would be willing to get down there, I, there's a lot of ferns and plant material that is already in established communities down there, is to, to take sporadic samples of it and hand-place them in the embankment, and, and vegetate it that way. We would, then, I think John had a good idea about putting up some stakes against the embankment, and putting some hay in there, just to protect the seedlings from falling out and everything else. But, but to do it on a very low-profile basis, with doing some transplanting of existing material in the area, I was personally fairly encouraged, because when we did, did the cut there, that there were a lot, and I took a close look, and there were a lot of roots that were still kind of coming out of the bank and everything else, you know, so, it's a matter of time before that starts, you know, with, with the daylight, you know, it starts to kind of sprout a little bit and everything else. I mean, there were already skunk cabbage, and there were already ferns that were starting to sprout all around the area, so, I guess that's the way I would approach it, if that's all right with the commission, and, you know, it's something that John and I can kind of, you know, can take on as a little hands-on task, so to speak, to finish it up.
What would be your timeframe for that?
Well, we'd do it, we'd do it as soon as possible, so we can, we can get, you know, we can get the growth started and everything else. I don't know, I'm hoping that maybe, you know, we do that, and, I don't know how that works with the certificate of compliance though, though, because I'm, we're, I'm a little nervous that time is flying by for the second phase here and everything else, so I'm just going to put that in your lap for...
This geographic footprint of work, the, the second phase's geographic footprint of work has nothing to do with this area, correct? Even though it's the same parcel, they're completely...
It does not, right, but as I understand it, you can't...
Policy perspective, no, as long as the geographic footprints don't overlap, it can be the same parcel.
Oh, really?
Yep. You just can't, you know, you can't propose...
Oh, so Mark was, led me a little bit...
Being very conservative. He was being very conservative.
I guess so. I see. Okay, great.
But is this going to be access, an access location for the, this next second phase? Will you be using this as access?
It will be used as access to build the trail part that kind of comes on to that open field. I'm sure they'll want to use it a little bit there, because the, the parking area that's being built on East Street has a trail that kind of extends off of it, but then it only, it, it crosses an existing culvert, stream crossing, which is not wide enough for some vehicles that need to get in there to actually build the accessible trail. Yep. So I, I, I don't want to just, I don't want to disturb that culvert crossing anymore than I have to.
So, but other than driving over this, there would be no work here?
No work is being...
Oh, no, no, no. Right, correct, right, yeah.
And it would be, still be okay, and I think, so if, if you're okay with it, and the commission's okay with it, I'd like to continue our review of the certificate, for the certificate of compliance to the June 22nd meeting, which would give these guys a chance to implement supplemental measures along that slope, and... and then we'll, we'll revisit it, and if you could just let us know when you're, when you've finished that, so that we or someone can pop out there before the next meeting and see what has happened.
Yeah, we'll, we'll send you some...
Which is only two weeks away, I realize, it's not much time, but...
Well, it'd be a nice morning on for me, from the office. If John can't do it, I, you know, we'll, we'll work on it.
My, my only caveat is, I'm, I'm fine with transplanting from the adjacent area, but just not to take more than one plant from any particular five-foot radius, so that we're not clearing a spot, you know, just obviously...
Spread it out, yeah.
No, the whole idea is that we would take plants sporadically or thinly throughout the whole community, so it doesn't, yeah, so we don't have any holes, spare spots, we don't want any.
Right. I mean, it's clearly very densely vegetated.
Yes.
Where disturbances didn't occur, so.
Right.
I'm not really concerned about the vegetative community out there, I just would rather say it than not say it.
Yeah, that's great, I, I appreciate, you know, the opportunity.
Other than this little area, the project came out great, you know, looks, looks, looks nice, did a good job.
Yeah, we had, you know, a couple issues towards the end, you know, we had to extend the fence, the borders, you know, between two borders, and then we had to, the drainage, you know, make sure drainage was coming in properly from the street, and so, it was washing out in some spot.
Which was a problem for years, right?
Yeah, yeah. But it was washing out in the left-hand side, so what they did was put gravel there, right? And an extra piece of, or did piece, put the extra piece of pavement down there.
Directly towards the...
Into the trough.
Yeah, I, yeah, we, much to John's, you know, concerned, we went ahead and did some work on town property to kind of mitigate something that had been, that was, you know, runoff from the cul-de-sac was kind of affecting everything else, so. We not only repaired our culvert for the accessibility to mudder field, but we've addressed some of the drainage runoff from the cul-de-sac area, too. I think that's, plus, kudos to the trust for their effort and expense to do... Plus, kudos to the trust for their effort and expense to do that certainly.
Yeah, agree. It's great. So is that a motion to continue it?
I have a question about your proposal for what to do about that stream embankment. I guess I'm just concerned that disturbing that steep slope more is going to increase erosion.
Well, the only thing that... I wouldn't characterize what we're going to do as disturb it so much as that we're going to put plants in it. Kind of hard to describe, but, you know, dig a little pockets and plug in some plants. You know.
So you could angle it away from... So if, you know, if this is the face, if you angle it in?
Yes, yeah. Yeah, well, yeah.
The erosion likelihood and then the fact that...
And if we put some stakes up against the slope and put some hay on it and everything else. You know, so we're taking some safeguards in there to kind of keep it stable a little bit. And that would buffer a little bit of some washing that may occur at the base for the stream. Stream is... I mean, you saw the stream, it's just kind of nice and quietly, just kind of flowing along. And instead of just kind of going down one now, it goes through both. And so, you know, it only stays about this deep or so.
It's nuts. It's great. So you're, so there's no seeding? And I heard at one point you thought possible seeding the slope too, in the hay, is that not proposed?
Well, I would strongly suggest with John that, you know, we try to take some... Either some bare root material or some live plants and transplant them and everything else. Yeah, I mean, the seeding isn't going to... I don't know how that's going to kind of, you know, stabilize, be stabilized on that bank. So I think the better thing to do is to do some transplanting from some indigenous material from the area.
I'd love to take a look at that closer because it might be not, it might not be possible to do it that way. If you've got, you know, as I recall, it's sort of an odd-shaped, steep dugout. And if you're trying to put plugs of stuff right in that stuff, you're right in that embankment per se. Hard to hold.
Angle it down. So here's the slope. I can't do this. And you angle, you know, instead of going straight back, you have it angled theoretically?
You've got nothing, not much of a base to put in there, it's gravel.
John, we're trying to talk to the commission that we can do this.
Yeah, I know.
But you don't try to talk us out of it.
I kind of like your hay bale idea. Because that's your hay bale idea? Because that would...
Soak up?
Yeah, you know, that would stabilize it temporarily.
Hay bale or just loose hay, pack it in, then put some soil, heavy soil, you know, pour soil on top of that, sprinkle it, and then you can put your plugs in there.
Yeah.
I don't like the idea of putting it exactly, you know, right in, directly into that. I've been in landscaping business for 50 years, just about. I put in some pretty wicked projects and made marsh gardens and everything else. That's how I do it.
Well, if that's the impression you're comfortable with...
We can talk it over, Bill and I'll talk it over more. Maybe get even the landscape company in there and they can throw in some ideas and come up with a plan, but...
So I guess the caveats are it should be handwork?
Well, yeah.
Plant stock should be selected from the site. Again, not to, we tend to mention this, but from a variety of areas, not one beater plot?
Yeah, I mean, another idea is that, you know, one of our members, Garrett Stover, did have some extra plants from his garden that he ordered. And he can't, couldn't fit in. And some were hedges, I mean, sedges and some were asters. So stuff like that would work.
If they're native and they're appropriate for the site?
Yeah.
I would ask first that you let us know?
Yeah.
If you're not using plant material from the site, what it is?
We'd have to check it out and see what we can really get grabbed from that site, you know.
Lots of poison ivy. That would hold it.
Yeah.
That was a nice little...
But, you know, asters are native. Fit right in there. Do well in the shade earth, so...
Looks like the jewel weed's already coming in.
Yeah, but, you know, ferns, ferns will work too. And once they grab, they can't root.
Right. I well know in my own. All right. So you have a few things that you're going to tweak. And we'll plan on continuing the discussion on June 22. And if there's something for us to see between now and then, let us know. And we'll either come out, some combination of folks will come out there or look at whatever you have to send in or...
Okay. See what we can do.
All right. And it sounds like we have a notice of intent for the next agenda.
Sounds like it.
So I can leave you with the copy here?
Sure, thank you.
Your copy?
Before I move on, we delete a motion.
So with some...
I'll make the motion and we continue the hearing until the 22nd.
22nd.
All those in paper? I salute. Thank you.
And here you are.
Thank you. So hopefully we have this... If we don't, for whatever reason, have this as a PDF... Oh, Jess, here's a check.
Yeah, all the checks are there.
What's the name of this? N I O I for what?
For Accessibility Trail Mutter Field.
Mutter Field. Call it Mutter Field. Help those fingers.
It's my giant... I don't know, palm hitting this stupid pad.
Is that a different laptop than you usually have?
No, I don't know what's going on.
Okay, thank you.
I think I've drawn it to anything.
I changed it on you.
I know, right?
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Moving on, no emergency certs. On May 18th... I don't have it here, I might screen. Dan, Jay and I did a compliance site visit.
What date?
May 18th, right before the last meeting. Compliance site visit, Bernie Gall's property, 37 South Street for enforcement order EO-2013-001. In general, everything looks the way they said it would look in the mitigation, the approved mitigation plan. That said, in Area 3A, which is kind of the wooded, or the area that had been all burning bushes in Riverfront, that Mr. Gall removed and then planted a variety of native saplings. We noted the presence of several non-native invasive species, including Japanese knotweed, black locust and garlif mustard. And...
Sounds good.
Actually, it was culinary herb. So you can harvest as much as you like.
Can you say all those three things again?
Japanese knotweed, which is also edible.
Really?
Yeah, go for it. Not enough. Okay, don't do it like a week...
Give about five minutes to pick it before it gets too big.
And black locust.
Is that edible?
That doesn't sound good at all.
It's a thorny tree.
Yeah, it's kind of cool.
Sounds like a bug.
Doesn't sound like a bug.
So... Indicated to Mr. Gall that these, part of the mitigation and monitoring was keeping the invasive species out. He did not recall that particular provision. So I have drafted a letter reiterating the approved plan of action, item 10, to monitor Area 3A and 3B for a period of two years with a report sent to the Conservation Commission no later than October 1, 2014 and October 1, 2015. Monitoring shall include manual removal of invasive species and date-stamped photo documentation of planting. So if anyone would care to take a look at the letter that I intend to send to Mr. Gall tomorrow? And if there are any recommendations? But basically, this is, this is the plan, this is part of the plan that his consultant came up with. This is part of...
It was in his plan, so...
It was his plan, right? And so...
So there are no invasive species in the planting of native?
No, just the, he's already planted the native stuff. It's doing all right. But native species are encroaching because the whole area had been vegetated with giant burning bushes. And, you know, they all got yanked out. And now, now there's a lot more daylight and room for stuff to encroach.
Was there supposed to be some sort of, there were native plants?
They put a native sap.
Yeah.
So it's just like...
I trust you.
The open areas, okay. So we have a letter to send to Bernie Gall.
Was this initial plan just to remove the unanimous? Or was it all invasive species? Like, was he just going to...
Well, it was that they had to come out in order to make room for the native species that we decided to go in. Because basically, a certain area of Riverfront got cleared when he built this secondary structure, garage, building, storage unit, whatever, a portion of which, including the driveway in the area adjacent to the driveway or in the Riverfront area of Lowden Brook. And so this is what we, the commission at the time deemed appropriate mitigation for something that, because of numbers, would have been preferable as a Riverfront area activity. Bernie Gall was in attendance at the site, was he?
Yes.
Yes, he was.
And we saw a beaver.
And that will segue into any correspondence we got from Jim Gracia, the city engineer. Apparently, the South Street beavers have returned. And the city... Who would have thought? We actually saw that that beaver was not afraid of us at all. He didn't even slap the water, he just stared at us. So segueing into that quick mention of it, commission received an email from Jim Gracia saying that the funding isn't in place yet, the city is going to move forward with permitting for a beaver-deceiver device, a culvert at South Street. And let them know that... And I don't know if the email went through or not. Jess, did you receive that response?
Did.
Okay. So I replied from the commission's email, basically saying, "Great. Here's our schedule. Whatever you can do."
That's great.
To the meeting. So he'll be filing something to do that. So we'll send this letter and see what happens.
You didn't even know why that was about to happen with that?
Hmm, I think given the nature, it could be an RDA. I think it's a pretty non-disruptive process to install. I don't think it's like a, it's not going to be a water level device. I think it's really going to be just like the wire protection that extends out from the inlet to the culvert to keep beavers from blocking it up with debris. And it makes it easier to clean it. So we'll see what they submit. Okay, updates. Ready? Mount Tom states, no updates. Paul Street Extension, Jillian states, no response.
You talked to him?
We talked to Mark Reed. I talked to Mark Reed. Did I talk to Mark Reed?
We talked about talking to Mark Reed. Can't tell you, there's one car that drives way too fast that lives down there. And that's all anybody in the neighborhood talks about whenever doing a get-together. It's pretty amazing. Anyways.
Okay.
To what we're talking about.
That was awesome.
That's not our jurisdiction. Unless they might put this pump in, buffer zone. Okay. Is this about that shed still or...
No, this is...
Some construction was starting and we didn't know.
We, at the beginning of the last meeting, that's what it was. David Darkscow was here.
He signed off a couple things.
I signed off on two building permits. And so we have not received any indication via weekly reports that that has kicked off, so...
Yeah, there's no sign of anything new happening other than like that weird hole that's been there for a month or two.
Okay.
What about that carryover from months ago about that deck?
Still never received anything.
Okay.
Might probably give up on that.
So no update?
No update.
Thank you.
Pleasant Street Mills. I went up there before tonight's meeting. And the erosion and sedimentation control barriers have been installed. There is one point properly installed. There's one point along the bike path closer to the southerly end. Closer to proposed detention basin number one, where there's the silt fence, there's a tear in the silt fence. It's like six to eight inches long. And they'll have to somehow sew it back up? Patch that with duct tape or something, just so that it doesn't continue to tear down to the ground surface. But that's the only flaw that I observed.
This is all that clearing on the other side of the bike path from the mills?
On the pond side, yes.
On the pond side, yeah.
They've also done extensive clearing on the mill side.
Yeah.
But that's what they... That was part of the plan. That's moving forward, so we'll start receiving weekly reports.
Is it true that they're closing off the bike path?
It was closed last week. It was open when I went out there, but...
They had it closed in a different section last week. You can get around it now.
Yes.
Bike path.
Is the bike path ever really closed even when it's supposed to be closed?
We are working, we are working with the contractor. The bike path will be closed at times because it is an active construction zone and it's very dangerous. We encourage people not to climb over fences, go around fences.
Move the fences.
Move the fences, strong the fences down to enter a construction zone because they are taking their life into their hands. So we are...
Actually, that bad trench patch, that's taking life into your hands too.
So the contractors have detour signs and construction signage that's being printed right now. It should hopefully be up this week. The plan is to devise a system so that it's gated so that when it's safe to use the bike path, the gates will be open and then people can use the bike path. And when it's not, it will be closed down. He is hoping that he'll be able to open it every weekend so that that will happen. But there may be times where the path is going to be closed, so...
Jake, can you take a detour through your new...
No, I had to go down Pleasant Street and all around.
Glendale, Ladville, West Palm, Rainbento, no updates.
Well, they removed the silt fence. But you were going to ask Jim or someone about the standing water in that?
Yeah, I never did.
But they did remove everything, so they're trying to close it out.
Okay.
And Bill and Gary, I apologize to Gracia about what, standing water?
There was, after a month of no rain, there was standing water in one of the stormwater features.
The entire standing, standing all the time?
Spagnum.
That's kind of like it. That is awesome.
Who's driving this?
I don't have air conditioning, so...
Okay, Nash Monoc Mills. Never got follow-up correspondence.
Nothing's done to it, it's still about the same. People are driving over it, a little hole, a little...
Is there any active construction? Is that even on their property?
They have a CO, so I'm not sure what active construction would still be going on.
Okay. So maybe it's following up saying certificate of compliance.
Did they finish the, did they finish the walkway from the road to the building? That was the thing that they were waiting for.
For a bridge?
No, there's like a bridge.
Oh, that's another issue and that's not part of your jurisdiction.
Is it within the hundred-foot buffer zone of the channelized stream?
I would think so.
So that it's currently on hold for right now. They need to get an easement from the city to drop the bridge at the, within the city's right-of-way. So there's legal stuff that has to happen with city council and that's going to take some time.
Yep, so that's probably the last piece.
They did put an erosion-controlled grass map, whatever it's called.
Rec controlled linkage?
Yep. Um, on that slope next to the parking lot.
That's good.
That's encouraging. Okay, um, Nashwannick Pond, Promenade Park.
Looks awesome.
Is open.
So we will file a certificate of compliance once the grass starts coming in and growing. But I'm going to wait for a little while until those two sections.
Yeah, where it's just bare erosion control blanket.
Right, so I'm going to wait a little while till that comes in and then we'll file.
Mm-hmm, great. Uh, no, no updates on the Otz Bo. Um, Town Beach.
There's, there's a small excavator there and a skid of erosion protection, so they're probably getting ready to go.
It sounds, I was going to say Terry um, thinks you'll be on site on Wednesday.
Okay.
And putting that in, so um, we'll have erosion controls to inspect.
Today, I should probably notify the mayor so that I'm sure we'll get calls on it. So um, he said he's going to start working on Wednesday, you said?
That's when he indicated, yep. And we need to make sure the file number sign is posted.
Didn't see it, but I wasn't looking for it.
So. Okay. General business. Draft local wetlands protection ordinance. Does anyone have the energy for that tonight?
No, no.
Okay. Manheim, Real Trail, draft O and M plan. I still need to talk to Barb, which is just a pain in my mind.
So.
Continued.
This is the section we should call confession.
True confession. That's exactly what you said. Bochowski Conservation Property, um, no action, no, no.
Where is that at?
I scanned in that plan.
You scanned in that plan and.
You need to send it to the state.
I need to send it to Natural Heritage. Okay. Echo Neil West Orchard. No, don't, don't start yelling. This is the exciting part. Um, so.
Sorry, can we just put that on there?
No.
You're sending, where are you sending that scan plant to?
Natural Heritage.
Thank you, go ahead.
Okay. Echo Neil West Orchard. Um, so Colleen and I met up there yesterday morning and got started on the wetland delineation. So uh, there are wetlands out there. And there are more to be delineated. And it's not, it.
And they fall in a line generally.
So I don't have a sketch, um, but you have a, I still feel like I'm crawling in. Take a seat for the rest of the time on me.
Yeah, I was like, oh, I'll go walk it and.
You were like, oh, this is not me. Okay, um, so kind of open area, there's. Now everybody gather. So um, there's definitely, there's like a pool, a small, open pool. Uh, that's kind of the head of. A, a reach of wetlands that connects down to the wetlands behind. No, it goes this way. It goes right here, sorry, I was young. But there's also something that sweeps around. And might, up along this top edge of this open area. Um, where there's some pretty big, um, there were hydro soils and silky dogwoods as well as elderberry. So we, you know, took that as far as I think we need to. Uh, then we started doing the leading at the south edge of this, but ran out of time, so we need to.
Uh, this is our appointment subcommittee meeting, January tenth.
Ju, June tenth.
June. Wow, can you tell that I'm like, budget? Um, June tenth, twenty fifteen, um, five thirty, we are getting off to a later start. Um, so we are now going over the criteria and the questions. Um, for the counselors to go through to start to assess the criteria for the applicants. For the assessor's position and we have present with us. Um, counselors, uh, Kusinski, counselor McCoy.
Smith is the easiest one.
Myself and then our personnel director, Jane.
Sekulow.
Sekulow, thank you. Um, so what we're discussing right now is um, the timeframe. Um, that we are going to be um, reviewing the applications to the counselors, which will be done privately. And uh, the personnel director's office, none of the applications will be released, obviously for confidentiality reasons for the candidates. Until we whittle it down to how many meet the criteria that we've put in place. Once we meet the criteria and we set the interview dates, then we will then release the names to the press. And um, then the candidates will get fair notice that we will be releasing their names to the press, obviously for, for open meeting laws and so forth, so. Um, because we're under the gun on this, uh, we need to, uh, we are looking at holding the interviews. Um, for Jane's suggestion was to do it next week. Um, so for next week, Friday's out because the offices are closed Friday.
Wednesday's out, well, not out, but.
Wednesday, Wednesday's out, the city council, and I'm not going to be here, so Wednesday's out. So that potentially leaves Tuesday and Thursday for the interviews. Um, I'm thinking we can get them all done in one night if we do them on forty-five to an hour, three hours. Forty-five minutes to an hour.
Well, how, I mean, maybe, I mean, initially I was kind of thinking we should interview everybody. And after going through them, I'm not so sure that's the case, so we may only be down to four or so anyway, so I think we could probably do that.
Okay, so Tuesday and Thursday?
Yeah, if we, if we have more than, well, let's, let's do it this way. If we have more than three candidates, go two nights. Break them into Tuesday and Thursday. If we have less than, can we do three in one night?
Well, if we're doing forty-five minutes, four would be.
Four hours, yeah.
Three hours.
Three hours. Yeah.
So maybe.
Something going on at Williston on Thursday.
Oh, that's that thing for the school? No, I thought that was Wednesday. That's Wednesday, the city council meeting. Oh, I don't know what's happening at Williston on Thursday. Try not to pay attention.
No, Dave's, it's a public event.
Oh.
Is he doing this?
I'm not sure.
I don't know.
So.
But um, we, we've really got to meet up to this timeframe because we've got to come forth. We've got to offer, we've got to make the decision after we do the interviews of who we want Jane to go forth to offer and negotiate with. Um, and then, once Jane does that, then she'll get back to us. And then she'll um, bring forth the person that we've selected. And then we'll, we'll put it into Barbara's hands for the city council appointment for our first meeting in July.
Okay.
Um, it has been past practice that we have brought people on before the city council official approval. So um, we may bring this person on for like Wednesday and Thursday for training purposes.
Emergency appointments, is that what that goes under?
I was brought on.
Yeah.
Couple of months before my appointment came through.
Yeah. Yeah, it's, it's to get them up and running.
I was just wondering.
Yeah, yeah. So um, I'm going to send an email out to the, to the rest of the counselors tonight telling them that they can come in tomorrow and Monday. The eleventh and fifteenth for.
Reviewing.
To review um, applications and resumes.
Do you think it would be worthwhile to have on that question, do you recommend interviewing this candidate? I mean, if we ask that question and we have to sort of go by.
Yeah, you could do that.
Or is that the gun, or should it be the decision of the, well, I guess we don't have to.
No.
The subcommittee would make, the subcommittee ultimately is making a decision of who we, who we will interview.
The only problem is, is we're not going to have another meeting. So I'm going to, I'm going to let the personnel director. Review it and tally it and, and make the decision.
I think that whether or not they would actually make the shortlist for the interview will be very dependent on this.
Right.
So I don't think we need that additional layer of, I think that could actually get us into difficult, a difficult situation.
Okay.
So. Okay.
Yeah, I think.
So you don't want the question on? So the question does not go on?
You think, if they meet, there are only going to be a few that will meet this criteria anyway, or?
Not everyone will meet that criteria, so you'll always have the opportunity of someone meeting the criteria but not wanting to be interviewed.
Right.
And I think unless we have specific reasons why they wouldn't make that interview. It could be a real labor issue or discrimination issue.
Let's see, where are you going?
You know, I just don't think we want to do that.
Uh, what are your hours, Jane?
Um, tomorrow.
Seven to seven.
Tomorrow it's um, none to none. I am not in tomorrow, but Nikki will have.
Oh, that's all right, so what are the hours, eight, eight thirty to?
Nikki is eight thirty to five tomorrow.
None to none.
None to none. First time in a long time.
That's okay, you need to do what you need to do.
And Monday I'm in seven thirty to.
Is the office open at seven thirty?
Yes.
All right. All right, so we're going to do this so that on Monday it will be from seven thirty. That should give everybody plenty of time to get in here if they're interested in doing it.
They call me that they're.
Seven thirty to?
It's usually till five, but if they. If they give me a call, I can, you know, stay until, because I know some of them work till five, so.
And your number?
Five two nine one four six six.
Five two nine one. One four six six. All right. Preferably, hopefully they'll call ahead. Just to make sure there's no other counselors. If there are other, two, two come at one time, which could possibly happen. If two come at one time, just. Put them in separate rooms and let them wait until one's done and then the other can conceivably look at it. So please call. Okay, so um, interviews. Will be held. For final candidates. So we're going to go two days or not?
I think we should schedule two days just in case. We can always cancel.
Okay. So we're looking at June sixth, June.
June sixteenth.
Sixteenth and eighteenth, right?
Mm-hmm.
This is awesome, guys. I'm, I'm really into it here. This is good.
What time are you thinking of starting?
Yep. What do you, what do you, what do you want to do here? Um, five? We want to give enough time for the candidates if they have to work.
Exactly, yeah.
That day, for them to get here, to obviously go home, spruce themselves up and whatever. Um, you know, give themselves a little bit of time to.
Well, five thirty.
Five thirty? I, I think five thirty would be good.
Yeah, and that could always, I mean, they can probably leave a little early if they have an appointment like that.
Yeah.
I mean, it's a big thing. They're planning for New York.
That's true.
It's not like we're having that news.
Well, it also gives us time to, to make sure that we're here on time and, and able to. Figure out who's going to do what questions and how many counselors show up to who's going to be asking the questions. Because we're not, we'll just keep rotating around.
Right.
Asking the same questions.
I think it has to be the committee.
Yeah, it will be us.
So I mean, and we're asking the same questions, so people, like counselors can sit in, maybe listen how people answer the questions.
Correct, they can be in, but I think that, I think that you have to, the subcommittee has to do, be the ones that ask the questions.
Because like, I mean, they. If there was room to deviate, then that could be argued, but we really can't, to be fair, so. We have to ask them the same questions anyway.
So we're going to start at five thirty and uh, interviews will be at a forty-five minute. Time.
Increment.
Increment. Thank you. All right, so interviews will be held for final candidates on June sixteenth and eighteenth. Time will be, time will start at. All right.
So you're thinking like five thirty, six fifteen, seven and seven forty-five?
Yeah.
You could get it done that night if there's four people.
Yeah.
I know, I'll need a bathroom break scheduled in there. No, myself.
All right, all right. Six twenty-five.
Promptly. Yeah, we will need a, yeah.
So if we have four, yeah, maybe we could do all four then.
Maybe, maybe, it's a possibility, but we do have the second night if something.
But that's, if we have four, we have to make the decision because we can't say, you know, we're too tired for going home.
Right, yeah, or like, we're just like, off the game, so yeah, okay. All right, um.
I'm sorry, the, the dates again and times for when counselors can look at the applications?
So applications and resumes can be reviewed on June eleventh and the fifteenth. Between the hours of eight thirty to five on the eleventh and on Monday, the fifteenth, seven thirty to five.
And then Jane said special arrangements are possible.
Right, so you want me to put that in there?
Do you have something to fill out or complete? For those who. Take the application.
One of these things.
That's what, that's what this is going to be.
I didn't get to you because it was just approved.
No, I didn't, I didn't, I didn't get one when I looked at the apps.
So would that be, because it wasn't approved by the committee.
We haven't approved it by the committee, but now that we have, if you would, if you'd like to take that one. And just, you know, if you want to use that one, if, if you want to do that tonight after we leave and fill it out. You can, you're more than happy, you know, more than. Okay? So special arrangements can be made. By calling. Calling Jane's office.
Or I can call myself.
Uh-uh, not going to do that. No, we're not going to do that. I'm, I'm making that discretionary decision. Yourself, yourself. Keep it private. Um, so review, so timeframe, counselors' timeframe is to review applications and resumes on June eleventh and fifteenth. Between the hours of eight thirty to five on the eleventh, on Thursday, the eleventh. And um. And on Monday, six fifteen from seven thirty to five to come in to Jane's. And so I'm going to put in the personnel office. Okay, and then I put Jane's number, five two nine one four six six. Please call if you can. Special arrangements can be made by calling Jane's office. Interviews will be held for final candidates on June sixteenth and eighteenth, twenty fifteen. Interviews will start at five thirty. Interviews will be forty-five, interviews will be in forty-five minute increments and will. Be done promptly or will begin promptly. Will be conducted. Right, in forty-five minute increments. All right, um. That's what this meeting was about tonight, was to get the timeframe down. Get these um, questionnaires for the counselors with the resumes. I'm going to send this right out tonight, email it to all of the counselors and to Jane. And Jane, if um, I'm going to ask, um, I, I would ask the committee to give me their thoughts on. Um, having present in, in the interviews, as I would like, definitely Jane anyways. Um, Jane is going to be the contact person for all, all of these people. Um, I did get a question from Counselor Hayes last night as to whether or not you have our new uh. Our new personnel. our new personnel management criteria, um, employee handbook put together so that we can go over. So you.
I do not, because all policies have to be rewritten before I can write the handbook.
All right, um.
Some of the policies are back from the eighties.
Yeah, she really had some, some concerns about that, so.
Is it, what is she, is it just, she wants to make sure the person understands the job requirements or underst- because I mean, maybe we could piece together, yeah, so maybe we could piece together what she wants, what she's looking for the candidate to have.
Well, I think she's looking for, when, when we offer the job to the employee, that we make it very clear that these are our policies and procedures. If you're gonna call in sick, if you're gonna be late, if you need to do vacation time, you're to, you know, let the personnel manager know of all of this, and then the personnel manager will then tell the president of the city council. You need to make sure that the office is open during business hours. You cannot leave the office during business hours. Office has to stay open all the time. If you're to leave the office, you need to, you know, all of those things that.
A lot of that we don't have policies on.
So. Have we ever done like a um, I don't know, I'm, I'm, I'm open for thoughts here. Please, I'm open.
I think my feeling, unfortunately, I mean, I think they tend, we're not there yet of having that available, but, but if there's specific areas that Jen thinks it's important right now that the person knows, unless she, unless she just thinks that the person before they get hired should be able to understand, I don't know what she wants the candidate to know. Because maybe if that's the case, we can piece by piece.
First thing comes in probationary period.
It's a six-month probation.
That's a standard, that's something that somebody should absolutely know when they started.
That's he in the offer letter.
Okay.
Okay.
But I, I.
There should be no doubt about that.
I really, even, even, even with our old policies in place, if we could just.
Pull something.
Pull something together to say, these are your responsibilities in this office, and you answer to me. For, for call-outs, sick time, vacation time, it all goes through the personnel's office. This is how time cards are done. These are your working hours, these are your days of work. When you're through Thursday, the offices are open, these are the hours that you need to be here. If you leave the office, you need to log your mileage. This, this is just all general procedures, you know? Things like that, that, that wouldn't necessarily be in the policies and procedures, but things that we really want this person that's under our purview as, as the city councilor of appointment, that we want to make very clear to them that these is who they need to report to, these are their responsibilities. You know, things like that.
Okay.
And then, and then, you know, type it all up and have it ready to go so that when you're, when you're getting all of your paperwork done, you can just go over the list with them and have them sign it so that they at least know, and we know have their, in their record, that these are, what's expected of them and. And then, once we get the new policies and procedures up and running, they're still with, hopefully within the six month. And Jennifer has offered, I guess her mother was a a human resource person for a big, big, big company and, so she's kind of been raised with working in her mother's office and helping out and stuff, so she's like, really in tune with all of this stuff. And, and so maybe we can, you know, get some ideas from her or whatever.
You know, I'll, I'll answer to what, what, because I mean, I think there's nothing wrong with saying, we don't have a complete manual done yet, because as you said, our policies have to be reviewed.
Right.
But if there is a Cliff Notes sheet of important policies that you think are important that an employee might want to know, and then we can fill in, you know, and then obviously, I say, you know, if you have any questions, obviously ask, we'll, we'll tell you the information, but, you know, I, I don't, I don't know, I'll have to ask Jen what she is looking for us for the candidate.
If you don't mind.
Oh, no.
Oh, thank you. So, yeah, I mean, she seems to be like, this is her, you know, I'm on the other side. I'm the one, the one that's usually being told what I can and can't do, so, like most people. Except unless you're the personnel manager who's telling you what you can and can't do, but, so, yeah.
I, in, in listening here and just thinking about these questions.
I have some questions.
Questions about the question.
What I feel is, one thing that I think is important to ask is, what steps are you going to take if your decision as an assessor is at odds with everybody else? Just from what I heard from the history of this position, that was an issue where disagreement didn't, didn't have a very orderly way about it.
So disagreement with the board of assessors? Because that's, who, who they?
With the board? Disagreement with the board, or disagreement with the customer, or?
Any of those. I guess.
So.
I don't see here that would really address, how do, how do you remain diplomatic when?
Resolve conflict.
How do you resolve conflicts?
Yeah.
Whether it be with.
Specifically, because you're in a position that has, I mean, it's a powerful position, it's going to have a lot of influence on people's lives. And what they hear from you is not always going to be what they want to hear. So in those situations, how do you deal with that conflict? I just think from the history of the position and knowing that, that matters in a workplace. That's something that I would like to see addressed. But what, what I feel is.
Do we have a question in there that, that Jane just took my copy, so do we have a question in there that kind of?
Well, this is, maybe were you faced with a challenging situation, how you handled it, but it could be, you know, I got, I got sick and.
All right, so we could reward that one maybe?
To be more specific.
To say something like, um.
Well, yeah, I mean, you, you, you're, there are potential conflicts bearing from board of assessors to the public. How would you, I mean, how do you see yourself resolving those potential issues, or something along that line?
Yeah, there, because you're working with such a wide range, you're working with the public, you're working with your board.
You're working with the collector.
You're working with the collectors, our treasurer, our finance director. The mayor, you're working with all of the city departments, you're working with the public, and you're working with your board. So, there's a lot of potential there for conflict, and, and with that being said, how do you, how do you go about resolving the conflicts and, and what would be your, or how would, how would you approach?
Okay, strategy sounds too strategic.
Resolving conflicts, really, I think, maybe?
Yeah, that may be hard, you know, to really get something, to move out of somebody unless you, unless you, I think if you gave a case example.
All right.
If you said, if there was a case, then dream up a case of something.
Oh, I, I'm sure Jane could come up with.
This is, this is the scenario. A, B, and C parties. You're, you're, you're over here, what are you doing?
That's good, I know, that's, that's good. We, we could go about, um, so.
And everybody has their own shot at it.
Yeah, we could basically say to the, we could, we could say in this, this question, something to the pendulum of, in this position, you're gonna be faced with many conflicts. So here are three, potential, so here are three examples of potential conflicts. How would you resolve them? So, the first one could be, you're in a board meeting with your, with your board of assessors, and you're having a disagreement on an abatement.
That's not a good question. An abatement question would be one, yeah.
An abatement is a good question. Because that's, that's what they're gonna be haggling about. And you have one board member that's adamantly against the abatement, and you feel that according to mass general law and everything that you have learned through the years that.
I didn't even put on that. We don't know that that's what they're, that, that could be the potential answer. I would go by the mass general laws. So I, I wouldn't even load that into the question.
Jane, do you think you can put this together?
I have a better idea. Do you know, Cris being tomorrow?
Chris will be in tomorrow.
Because I think, if you could, you, you understand the gist of what we're trying to get at, if you could see, maybe she could put that question together.
Okay.
Yeah.
You know what I'm saying?
I guess the other part of that is, as, as the person who would be listening to their answers.
Yeah.
I'm not sure if that would be, yeah.
Right or wrong.
So, so maybe along with the question, the, you know, you have some personal advice as to what we're looking for.
What we're looking for.
I mean, maybe, I'm thinking maybe two questions, three might.
Two, all right, two questions, yeah, two little follow-up questions to little add to it. We just have two examples of how you would resolve these types of conflicts.
Do you want to go with board and department head or public?
I would say one, how would you resolve an issue with the board, and how would they?
The board, the board or department head, because they're kind of the same. You know, you got the board, but you also have the department heads that you're working with that are both city. The board is appointed by us, just as the assessor is, and the city is the, the government entity that we all have to get along with and work with.
So private versus public.
So, yeah, private versus public, yeah, there you go.
Private citizen versus public.
So, kind of fleshing out, what, what, what is the assessor's role? Despite what other departments think the assessor's role might be, what would you stand on for the assessor's role, and what, where would you say, okay, another collector or treasurer's role would be like this, and I'd, I'd have to really work more to their needs than to see.
Well, hopefully that'll get fleshed out with the questions.
That's what I'm, that's what I'm wondering is that, because there can be a tremendous conflict among the various positions.
Absolutely.
And if we can avoid that.
We want everybody to be working together as a team.
But you understand their position in the role.
Right.
And not back down from their position in the role, collegially.
Well, yeah, and, and I mean, mass general law basically outlines responsibilities, duties, and whatever, so hopefully whoever's coming in that's meets our other criteria will have to be able to say, well, a lot of what you're talking about is, is outlined under mass general law, and what my duties and responsibilities are, and. Hopefully.
Have we lost you there, or do you get it?
No, Jane's right there. She, she knows exactly what we're talking about. She's right there. That's a good question, though, right? Yes, that's what we're thinking.
Well, in a lot of interviews, we do, we do, we have quite so many questions, and then we have so many scenarios. So they, you know, we, we go from just a cut and dry answer to, for example, a dispatch question was, you're receiving, you just received your fifth nine-one-one call from the same elderly resident for the same noise in the basement. What do you do?
That's a good one.
And that was, you know, so they do like four scenarios, and they have, you know, maybe like eight or nine questions.
That's, that's, you're honing a lot of information out of something like that.
And it really weeds out the people who at least have a basis of knowledge.
Right.
Too.
Right.
I mean, I, I, I don't know, unfortunately, if any of us have the knowledge base to make questions, unless, unless Chris wants to help us out with this, you know?
Chris, now, so, so that's going along to where I was gonna also say was, um, I would love to have, obviously Jane there. If Chris could make herself available to be there and kind of listen.
I think she's away.
She's away? No, all right.
She's away one week, but I will check with her.
But definitely Melissa. Our finance director, the mayor. And, and that will give, that will give whoever we're interviewing the, the knowledge right then and there that these, these are the city entities that you're gonna be working with, and they're all important, you know? And then, who else? Um, oh, our, um, our auditor. Yeah, because our, they, they work very closely with the auditor.
Well, I mean, I don't, I mean, that's, you're asking for a lot of people to stay late. I mean, I don't, I think they could be invited, but I don't.
They're usually here, though, till, what time are our offices open? Till five, right?
So we're going to eight, right?
Well, yeah, but, you know, one of those people. Yeah, thou does, yeah, yeah. So, I mean, Melissa certainly would have a really good feel for.
I have to go to the finance.
Oh, okay.
Oh, yes, okay.
Just, just two, two quick.
Okay.
One was, question five, what unique qualifications separate you from other candidates? If I don't know who the other candidates are, I'm hard to press to say how I separate myself from them. Is there another way to phrase the question that would say, but then it turns into the last question, or, or, or for number fourteen, why should we hire you?
Or what, what?
You know, so I was gonna say, what unique qualifications would make you stand out, but then that's why we should hire you, is number fourteen, that's the same question. But to ask what, how you differ from other candidates, I don't know your pool of candidates, so I can't tell you how I separate myself from someone I don't know who they are.
What if we could separate you from another assessor candidate?
But I don't know who they are, I don't know what, that sounds to me.
What's the question?
What unique qualifications separate you from other candidates?
Like who?
Yeah, I take your point for sure, yeah.
What? What kind of skills and, um, you could do something like, what kind of skills and experience do you bring to us? That might make you.
But that's kind of what the first is.
Oh, is it? Okay, so I don't have questions.
And then fourteen becomes, why should we hire you?
Describe your education, work, experience.
I feel like the same.
Well, that's your education and work experience.
Sorry.
No, no.
No.
Is there another one? I mean, do you need to go? You want us to?
No, no, that, that was just that, that question. The other thing was the procedure. It sounds like, it sounds like we're gonna, we, we have one plan, and that was to meet on the twenty-fourth or twenty-fifth or something, and all get together and make a selection process at that point. This is getting pushed up till Tuesday.
No, the twenty-fourth and the twenty-fifth were the original.
The original days.
Yeah, interviews.
Now we're pushing the interviews to next week.
Yeah.
Because we, we.
Because I understand why, I understand why. My, my, my thinking is, okay, so.
They need to do it.
The counselors who are here, you're asking them everyone to show up and listen to the questions, and then wait until the July meeting to vote? Or can we, we, we all are expected to vote that, if, if it's one night or two nights after?
We're gonna vote right after the meeting.
Okay, all right, so all the counselors?
Whoever's there, but it will be the, this committee that will put forth the, the nomination to the city council.
Right, but it would be the counselors who vote?
The whole council?
The whole council. Who votes it to vote that night, who, after the interview?
Well, it will, it will be the subcommittee who will vote to go forward with, to, for Jane to go forward and talk to who our top candidates are, and see if she can secure an agreement from them to come work with us. Come to a bargaining agreement.
Right.
However that works. So, we will, we will pick our top candidate from our, our interviews, we will listen, but it will be the, the three of us that go forth with who we tell Jane to offer the position to. Usually it's the subcommittee's decision to go forth, but of course, any counselors that are there can participate in the discussion. But the vote will only be for the three, for her to go ahead and talk to the candidates and then offer them.
I think that should be made clear to the rest of the counselors, that wasn't, when we had our last meeting, I believe Counselor Rist has some questions about, about this.
Okay.
And it wasn't clear.
Well, usually, I mean, in subcommittees, you know, when, when subcommittees make a recommendation, it's the committee members.
If, if, if there were many counselors who had a different opinion, that the appointments committee would make one decision, and then the person would be interviewed and asked to, asked to come in.
All right, well, I will, I will put that in the email.
And then to have the vote come in July and have it be different.
And he was, uh.
Yeah, especially if you, if you've gathered seven or eight counselors at the interviews, I would think that vote. Hopefully everyone will agree, but if we didn't, I, what I'm envisioning is a scenario where three people could say one thing, and five people could say something else.
How about this one? I'm gonna leave it up to the president to decide how he wants that vote, because he is.
That would be awkward.
He is our chair of all our committees.
I see your point, because technically the subcommittee could approve someone and the whole council could vote them down.
Right.
If it wasn't.
If, if, if most of the people are here that night, it would make sense to, I think, have that vote be for most of the people, but I leave that to you guys to figure out.
Okay.
Very good.
Thanks for that.
Thank you.
Sorry.
Oh.
Finance at six.
Yes.
Yeah, thank you. He does bring up a valid point. Normally, in the past, it's always been just with all of the committees, the, the committee members going forth with.
I mean, every other point, that's how it works.
Right.
You know, we make a recommendation, the city council votes on it.
Right.
Right, and that's how mine, mine was, I went for a couple of months panicking that, you know, what is?
She was appointed by the mayor or brought on by the mayor, but then had to wait for the final appointment to come through through us.
But that, but he raised, there is the possibility of that scenario, maybe slim, but there would be the possibility. I mean, I can't, I can't imagine the three of us would be so off-base that we would be in favor of one that was clearly not, at least a few more other counselors prefer choice two. So, I mean, that's the choice, do we, do we think the risk is low enough that we stay with just the subcommittee? Because I would be embarrassing for the city if one said this and the whole city council voted against it. I know, unreported, I have to deal with that, but. So, what do you think, Jane, any?
It's, it's hard, I mean, I can see, I was trying to think how my, my offer was worded and, you know, I was given the offer pending approval of the city council, but.
But the mayor made the choice.
Correct. My concern is if we say, are you, you know, here's an offer, but it's not really an offer until the city council, I don't think we're gonna get someone to accept it.
But it's weird, though, because typically this is not the mayor's appointment, it's our appointment.
Correct.
So it makes it more complicated in that respect, but.
Because you have that one, you have.
We didn't do it for the auditor, I didn't do it for the auditor, it was a three pick, remember when we appointed Val? It was our vote, we did take input from the other counselors at the table, we basically ran it like a meeting where we asked everybody's opinion, you know, we asked Melissa's opinion, we'll ask your opinion, we'll ask the mayor's opinion, we'll ask any counselors that are there, their opinion to vote on, I mean, I think that we're more than capable to be able to do that. And then what we'll do is we'll, we'll tell Jane that this is our number one candidate, this is our second candidate. If number one turns down the job offer, then go, by all means, go to the second candidate and.
So should we then, are we, there's a plan now that after that last interview, the subcommittee and as many other, other counselors and personnel there, we will have a meeting to discuss it and then the subcommittee will vote, and I think at that point, we will probably get a good feel how many, if, you know.
Can we go into executive session after the interviews to?
I.
I can't remember what Barbara's email.
Don't know if we can or not, if you, if, I don't think.
Yeah, I know, I mean, like, there's five situations, but I don't think hiring someone is one of them, but maybe, but I don't think so.
I think that, I think that we're just gonna have to, I don't know, can you, can you ask Barbara that?
She's out until Monday, I believe she's.
Yeah, I know, so we've got time.
But Mary Ann could probably, it was a form, and it's like, it's five, let's see if I can get them fit.
But she, because Barbara sent us an email about tonight.
Yeah, I have it in here, she was very worried about us. And I said, no, 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 we're not discussing any of that, she's like, well, you can't discuss, and I, I know that, we're not gonna. Okay, so she wrote, all right, so this was Barbara's, remember that your meeting and interview sessions will need to be posted. So let me know when you'll be meeting and what the agenda should say. FYI, as things go along beyond the meeting on the tenth, the following is from the open meeting law, the exemption for preliminary screening of applicants by a subcommittee to be done in executive session.
Sounds like it's in there.
The exemption for the preliminary, you must open the meeting in public, then vote to go in executive session using executive session form, including it as part of your minutes, I've included that form for you if you need it.
Good.
But she was talking about tonight, though.
Right, but we weren't interviewing any.
Right, but I think it sounds like there's the option where we can do that.
So if you wanted to discuss, if the committee wanted to discuss the candidates tonight, you could go into executive session and talk about them.
By filling out the form and saying we're going.
Right, like you do for other executive sessions.
So, so to consider or interview applicants for employment or appointment by a preliminary screening committee, this is preliminary. So that's to weed them out, which we're not doing. We're doing the preliminary basically privately, so we're not meeting, so it's not right. So we don't need to do that, because that's for the preliminary, that's probably for, to weed your candidates down which we're doing privately for the, for the counselors. So, let's see. By, if the chair declares an open meeting will have detrimental effect on obtaining qualified applicants, provided however that this clause shall not apply to any meeting, including meetings of a preliminary screening committee to consider the interview applicants who have passed a prior preliminary screening, so I don't think it's gonna apply to us.
For this one, no.
Once we, once we narrow it.
Once we narrow it, there are candidates that are gonna come out, yeah.
Oh, so.
Right.
So after we interview, because I was thinking, after we interviewed everyone, the committee and other counselors go together and discuss.
Once you narrow it down, those are your finalists and it's now public.
Right, it's initial screening process. The purpose does not apply to any stage in the hiring process after the screening committee or subcommittee votes to recommend candidates to its parent body. It may however include a review of resumes, multiple rounds of interviews by screening committees aimed at narrowing the group of applicants down to finalists. At the time that the executive session is proposed to vote, and on, the chair must state on the record that having discussion in an open session will be detrimental to the public body's ability to attract qualified applicants for the position, if the public body obstinates to convene a preliminary screening committee, the committee must contain less than a quorum of the members of the parent body. The committee may also contain members who are not members of the parent public body. All right, so I, this is for preliminary, and that's where her, and as I said, we're not holding a preliminary screening. None of us are gonna be together to do that, we're gonna privately go in, look at the resumes and applications, rate them, and give them all to the personnel manager and let's be done with it.
Okay, and we're leaving it, Jane, will be her decision who for, who will we?
Right, like going off of the criteria that is set for her, yeah.
And then when we have the interviews, this is a question now, when are we, when is the subcommittee going to make its recommendation of who?
Right after, so we're gonna have to put that in our, in our agendas.
The last interview.
So, we're gonna have, I'm gonna CC this to Barbara so that she knows where we're going. So, the interviews will be held for final candidates on June sixteenth and eighteenth. Got that in there, after the fin, so this is the part that we need to narrow down now, after the final interview, the subcommittee will meet to discuss the candidates?
I would say subcommittee and all interested, maybe all, all interested.
So the subcommittee and all interested parties?
Counselors.
Counselors. Because we can always ask during that time for the input from our other city counterparts. So, after the final interview, the subcommittee and all interested counselors will meet to discuss the candidates.
I mean, if you think that's an issue, we could always put counselors and invited city officials.
Yeah.
We could say the mayor, Jane, whatever, we can invite certain people.
Okay, yeah, because we want to be clear. City officials, invited city officials, I like that. All right, so, because she's gonna have to put this in our open meeting. So invited city officials will meet to discuss the candidates. The vote.
I think you say that counselors, well, all counselors and attendees will be asked for their opinion, but ultimately, it will be this appointments subcommittee that will vote on who will be put forward.
Top two candidates are.
All right, so the appointments subcommittee will then make a motion and will vote on the top candidates, vote authorizing, vote to authorize the personnel manager to offer the job.
Well, it would be background check, conduct background check, and then, unless you want me to.
Oh, no, no, we want you to vet them out.
Whatever you usually do.
Well, do you want me to do that prior to the interviews, or do you want me to do it?
Does it cost money?
No. Why don't you do it prior? Because it does take a little bit of time to get queries and stories and.
Queries are pretty much immediate unless.
Yeah, right.
It's more with the references getting back.
Yeah, you know what, if we come up with the final candidates that we're gonna interview, then I don't, I don't see that that would be inappropriate, because their names have been released.
Yeah, and also, I think for me, it's the thing, what the references say play a very important, so I would like to know what the references are, you know, at some point, whether it be during the interview process or at that meeting, but that's really important. Although there's, nowadays, you're so limited what they can say.
I know.
They worked here between June sixth and June seventeenth.
Pretty much, that's what I.
The key question now is that you get away with, you get a lot is, would you rehire? Some companies won't answer that.
Which kind of is answering it on some level. But yeah, I think that's important, I mean, when I know other things people have hired, that's been really important to see how references are.
So how do you wanna, how do you want me to phrase that, the appointments subcommittee will then make a motion and will vote to authorize the personnel manager to?
Would it make a motion to vote to authorize?
Make a motion to authorize?
Extension of an offer to candidate and also to an alternate if needed.
All right, I liked how you said that, the appointments subcommittee will then make a motion to authorize the personnel manager to?
Extend an offer.
Extend an offer, I like that. Of employment?
To their.
To the first candidate?
Choice or first choice.
That's a good point, since we're under time constraints, I think, we should probably vote, two votes, one on the first choice and one on the second choice. You might, you might want to put that in there, that we will vote on both first and second choice.
Okay, so, appointments subcommittee will then make a, all right, so the appointments subcommittee will then, all right, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna read, I'm gonna keep that sentence, the, and then I'm gonna do the appointments subcommittee will first vote on the first candidate to go forward and then will vote on the second candidate. Does that sound good?
Can you read up the paragraph, because I know we saw a lot of stuff in there.
I know. Okay, hold on. All right, so after the final interview, the subcommittee and all interested counselors and invited city officials will meet to discuss the candidates. The appointments subcommittee will first vote on the first candidate and then will vote on the second candidate to go forward with.
See, I would put in that sentence before there, that like, you know, all counselors are welcome to make recommendations, but ultimately.
After discussion by all counselors.
I just, because it looks like we go right from, I want to make sure that everyone knows that they can say what they think, but ultimately.
All right, so after the final interview, the subcommittee and all interested counselors and invited city officials will meet to discuss the candidates. The.
Say all counselors and invitees' recommendations will be.
Taken into consideration.
Taken into consideration, however, ultimately, the city council, the subcommittee will take the final vote on.
So all counselors and invitees, um.
Will be given the opportunity to express their opinion?
Right.
Okay. Be given the opportunity to express their opinions.
However, the.
Comma. However, the final decision will be made by the appointments subcommittee.
Maybe, maybe, let me say the final vote even, just so they don't get confused, the final vote.
Final vote will be made by the appointments subcommittee. Sound good?
Yep.
Barbara will she'll be able to put that all into, for the posting. But this is all gonna be in the meeting minutes, so I'll forward this to you so you can put it into, who's, who's secretary?
Joe.
Yeah.
Did you get that too?
Yeah.
Yeah, no, no, because I'm gonna be, I'm gonna be sending this to you, so you can just copy and paste it and put it right in there. So you, you won't have to, so after the final interview, the subcommittee and all interested counselors and invited city officials will meet to discuss candidates, all counselors and invitees will be given the opportunity to express their opinions. However, the final vote will be made by the appointments subcommittee. The appointments subcommittee will first vote on the first candidate and then will vote on the second candidate to go forward with?
I think the top candidate, not the first candidate.
And alternate candidate.
Yeah, top and alternate, yeah, sounds good.
Okay. Top candidate and then will vote on an alternate. Like that, cute, to go forward with, so the appointments subcommittee will vote on the top candidate and then will vote on an alternate candidate to go forward with. So I get, sounds good. The appointments subcommittee will then make a motion to authorize the personnel manager to extend an offer of employment to the top candidate. Keep the language the same. Okay. To the top candidate, um. Then what do you want me to do, so we will make the motion to authorize the personal manager to extend an offer of employment to the top candidate.
Any questions? Talk to Joy.
Yeah, but so, I mean, then do we go for, so then, let's say you will.
Do you want me to go into that, that the personnel manager will then vet out, or no? Or no? I only think we need to go into that.
No, I'm just, I'm just curious my own sake, what the procedure is. So, then you will call, if they accept...
Have it prior to the references?
Well, yeah, we've got those priors.
Will be prior to the interview.
But we'll make the decision, let's offer it to candidate A. You will call that person. If they accept, you'll email us and say, accepted or didn't accept. And then that, in that meeting, you'll vote on it. So, which means tomorrow or next week, we need to set a public hearing. I assume, do we need to set a public hearing for voting on the assess or is that just a vote?
No.
Just a vote?
It's just a vote, because it's a City Council appointment.
Okay. So, we don't have to set up...
City Council can make their appointments at any time that they want. It will be put into the agenda. Because Barbara will put it into the agenda, because that's Barbara's meticulous on that. But, um, just like when we voted on Barbara's appointment, we voted on your appointment. We did get yours, but we had to vet it before, because it came from the outside. But if it's a City Council appointment, we're gonna all assume that we've all vetted it.
Right, and there's, there's no need for the, for the public to have a public hearing about this appointment?
No, public can come, public speak time and speak about anything. But this particular thing does not need to be...
And then, and it's done, right?
Then it's done. All right. Wow, okay. So, is there anything else that we have pressing? Did we get any new appointments? I'm, I'm sorry. We did, oh, thank you, Karen. She probably figured we had enough on our plate.
Can I ask a question that typically I know most interviews I've been in or are part of, they always ask you, do you have any questions for us? Is that on there?
Yes, yes, that question.
Oh, I thought the last question, oh, it was 14, okay, there it is.
All right. Anything else?
We usually, I usually put, change that to, do you have anything you'd like to add? Or do you have any questions for us?
Yeah.
Do we need to ask them their weekly salary? Or should we just say, what are your salary expectations? I mean, or is it Portland, we know what their salary is?
Because it's cut and dry, I mean, it's...
We only have a, yeah.
I have a question. Do they have any questions for us? And they start asking assessment questions? Assessor questions? I, I don't... Are we gonna have someone that can answer assessment questions?
Kinda why I...
I would think...
Melissa might be able to answer a lot of them.
Melissa might be able to cover most of them, I think.
For the scenario ones, when I work with Chris on them, I'm gonna ask her.
Yeah.
Do, do you think? I mean, that we're gonna open this up to everybody, so I'm hoping that some of our board might be there. Our Board of Assessors.
I mean, should we send them an invitation?
Well, one of them's applying.
One of them's applying.
That's where, oh, right.
One isn't, yeah. Right. But they're, they're free to come, and I think one will probably be there anyways, I, I think. I don't, I haven't spoken to... Peter might show up and Joanne might show up. Both are very vested into their board and... And so, yeah.
Okay. Where do you wanna hold these?
Upstairs. Room one.
Big office room?
Big office room.
Yeah, yeah, so we need to, um... Yes, I need to put that in there because we need to, um... Barbara needs to secure it.
Yeah, I can put that in.
Can you? All right. Might have to move some people around.
All right, I kinda, I, I do see JP's point about question five.
I think it's question one, five, and 14 are all basically
The same.
Coming up with the same information.
Yeah, I remember actually now, it's kind of batched me that I felt like, didn't we just ask you this or like? Because then the candidate feels kinda strange, giving you the same answer, but you kinda asked me the same question.
Yeah.
So, we could just leave, we could put one as, describe your education or just describe your qualifications as it, as they relate to this position. And then take out five and 14.
Yeah, I mean, we already have their education, their resume and application. So, we kinda have that. So, I, I think...
So, describe your qualifications as they relate to this position?
Yeah, because I mean, some instances, I, I wouldn't mind, I mean, I guess it's there, but I, I sometimes it's hard to read through the resumes, you know, it'd be nice if they said, well, I've done this assessor's class, I've done this assessor class, I've gotten this degree. I wouldn't mind if they repeated that back for me, so...
Well, what if, for number five, what have we questioned? What courses in assessing and praising have you taken within the last
Yeah, that's good.
Year or two years?
Yes, that's good, because that relates directly to the position and it, and we're gonna get a feel for how they're updating themselves in, in their classes and so forth.
A very, a very general question, and this is just from looking on the internet, but what methods do you use to determine the taxability and value of properties? Would those kinda questions be in, important for this position? Or would it already be from the city, like, they would already have that later?
I thought this...
I think the state lays that out, Mass. General Law lays that out, because there's a specific formula that they have to do, there's, they have to use, they have to go by the appraising schedule and that. Sometimes they have to do a full city appraisal. Then other years, they only do sections and, I mean, it's, it's a whole... Mass. General Law, I think, dictates all of that as far as that goes. For Massachusetts, maybe looking at something else from a different state or something, but, um...
I mean, one question, one assessor question they could ask that may see how someone responds to questions would be, what is your opinion on a split or tax rate for a community, you know? And not that there's a right answer, wrong answer for that, but you, you might be able to see how they think about taxation and assessing and stuff.
Some other questions were share an experience in which analyzing trends helped you assess property values or determine the accuracy of assessments? Or how do you even share the accuracy of information regarding transfer of prop, transfers of property?
See, I'm afraid the answer would be all over our head, be like, okay.
But I don't know if these questions are important at some level.
The second one you just, the last one you just said, that's all deed related, I mean, the transfers are...
That's all Mass. General Law, that's all deed.
That's all registry.
But the second and last one, I kinda liked the gist of it.
Yeah.
It was, what was that second and last one we reduced? I've already hit on there.
Share an experience in which analyzing trends helped you assess property values or determine the accuracy of assessments? I guess I, I found that interesting, just because we're coming out of a recession. So, if the last time someone's property was assessed, I, I have no idea about any of this, but if, you know, i- if there's clearly been a huge increase or decrease in the property value because of whatever, how would they know that? And...
Can you say that one more time?
Sure. Share an experience in which analyzing trends helped you assess property values or determine the accuracy of assessments?
Okay, Joe, you had said, you wanna just put, what are your salary expectations? Or do we even need that if it's...
No, I don't mind salary expe, well, actually, I mean, I don't know if we even need it, because I mean, you guys are, whoever discusses salaries is gonna go over that.
Yeah, you only have, yeah, it's the...
I mean, I don't necessarily know if we need to know their salary, but on top of that, I mean, I guess you could say... But I, I think that the salary expectation discussion, are we, I mean, I guess because we're the higher people, are we supposed to talk salary with them?
Do we have anything in here that says that the position's a four-day work week? And the hours? So, maybe we wanna do that in the introduction? What do you think? Can you write me up an introduction, kind of overviewing the work, the, the days of work, the hours of work, the, the position, and you have appointed Board of Assessors that you will meet, that you will be expected to meet with?
Some of that may be in the job description.
At their meetings and... I don't know if that was put in the job description though, was it? With the hours and...
It was not.
It was not, so we need to make that clear.
And how about, the, the relating, because the assessor used to be on the board and changed that, they're not on the board, so... But I think was not an issue previously, that, that that person needs to attend...
Right, our expectation is that, that the assessor attend
Board.
The Board of Assessor Meetings.
Do we have that in the...
It is in the job description.
Okay. Okay.
I'm just trying to see if it's in the posting.
Attends professional meetings, training programs, and seminars in order to stay abreast of changes or trends. Professional meetings. Prepares and administers department budget purchases.
Oh, it is, it says attends board, in, under definition in the first paragraph, attends Board of Assessors meetings and plans managers and provides direction under the Board of Assessors.
Excellent, 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 excellent. Okay.
When you mentioned the four days, you probably see currently, because I mean, it could change and we don't wanna have some, so I was hiring for four days, I'm not going to five.
And our office hours are, what, eight to five, Monday to Thursday? Is that what, what is it?
Seven thirty to five, Monday, Tuesday, eight to six.
Okay, all right, we're gonna, yeah.
And eight to five.
Okay. With an hour of lunch every day or something like that, yeah. So, that they know that... Well, that's one piece of the puzzle, getting it out there during the interview process. So, okay.
I would like to do a little bit of an executive session to get some input.
Right now? Do you have that sent to you, Joe, if you wish to do it?
Can I use the bathroom now?
Yeah, go ahead.
Sorry, I just think that because it's cutting so close, I wanna make sure we're...
Will we be able to do that? Because we're gonna be, are we gonna be discussing a particular applicant or...
No, this is just what she was talking about, the preliminary screening.
Okay.
So, you just need to say, well...
Is this gonna be detrimental to obtaining qualified applicants?
Yes.
Okay. All right, so to consider or interview applicants for employment or appointment, we don't have the paperwork. I didn't download it.
I thought, I thought she attached it.
She said she did, but I'm not seeing it. Go to this one. Oh, there it is. But I can't print it out.
Just read it, I mean, we just have to read it.
Oh, we just have to read it?
We can do that tomorrow.
Okay. Okay. So, I have to...
What's going on, guys? I'm hearing rumors of changes.
There's no changes. Oh, yes, the date changes, yes, I'm gonna be emailing that.
I gotta go into executive session, Jane, to talk about some of the applicants.
What, you mean at a council meeting?
Oh, wait. The meeting convened in open session and notice and posting of the meeting was given. We've done that. After executive session, we will reconvene or not.
Yes.
And the purpose of the executive is to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations and non-union personnel, or to conduct collective bargaining sessions, contract negotiations.
You pick one of them, yeah.
To discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining, no. Discuss deployment or of or strategy regarding security personnel or devices. Investigate a charge of criminal misconduct, conduct. Consider purchase to comply with the Act of Authorities, Special Law, Federal Grant. To consider or interview applicants for employment by a preliminary screening committee if the chair declares that an open meeting will have a detrimental effect in obtaining qualified applicants. This shall not apply to any meeting regarding applicants who have been passed a prior preliminary screening. Is that...
That's it.
That's it.
That's where we're at.
Okay.
So, that's why we're going to an executive session.
Okay, so, I gotta wait till
Timer gets off.
Timer gets off and then I'll say it.
I, I, I won't interrupt you, except can you explain the date changes that JP was trying to explain to me? Am I allowed to ask that?
Yeah, Jane, there's a little more urgency as far as...
So, I gotta, I gotta make this public notice. Okay, so... Can, can we do this? Executive session, or is, does that get done?
If you don't mind if I ask a question.
So, um, City Council Executive Session Form, Mass. General Law, Chapter 30, Section, uh, 30A, Section 21, City of East Hampton, today's date, June, we're gonna need to close the door, could you close the doors, please? June 10th, 2015. It is, I'm probably going above and beyond, six, six forty-four. It is, uh, in the matter of discussing H to to consider or interview applicants for employment by a preliminary screening committee if the chair declares that an open meeting will have a detrimental effect in obtaining qualified applicants. This shall not apply to any meeting regarding applicants who have passed a priori, a prior preliminary screening. That will have to be checked. Can we do the paperwork tomorrow?
Print it out.
This is the purpose of this executive session. A quorum being present and the majority having voted, the quorum is present, um, so I will, the following, it is moved by myself, Joy Winnie, Chair of this Appointment Subcommittee and duly seconded by
Hey, Counselor McCoy.
Counselor McCoy, that this government body hold an executive session, the following roll call, call vote was taken. Counselor McCoy, yes or no? Yes, no, abstain or absent?
Yes, yes, sorry.
Um, it seems we've got all the counselors.
No, no, it's just your...
Counselor Tamara, Tamara Smith.
Yes.
Myself, Joy Winnie, yes. And again, um, the quorum being present and the majority having voted to go into executive session, the Chair, the Subcommittee Chair states that the meeting convened, this meeting was convened in open session and notice and posting of the meeting was given. After executive session, we will reconvene, yes. And the purpose of this executive session is H to consider or interview applicants for employment by a preliminary screening committee if the chair declares that an open meeting will have a detrimental effect on obtaining qualified applicants. This shall not apply to any meeting regarding applicants who have passed a prior preliminary screening. All of the foregoing is hereby made a part of the official minutes of this body. Okay, so we are now going into executive session, I am turning the camera off. Uh, this is the Appointment Subcommittee reconvening after executive committee, it is 7:05. I will entertain a motion, I think that everything, do we have any new business on our agenda? Do we have any old business?
I did, I did send amendments.
Okay, you have new business, all right.
I did speak with the PTO Chair regarding the School Building Committee.
Oh, okay.
And I am going to be speaking at the PTO at 6:30 tomorrow.
Really?
To just let them know about what the committee would entail and see if they have any representatives, so, because I know there's still three spots available.
Oh, very good, thank you.
Just a continuation from the last time of talking about the...
Thank you for coming forth and doing that.
Yeah, my pleasure.
Joe, anything?
No, I, I heard that, but I heard...
That's awesome, thank you. That's awesome, because you know...
Thank God. Your reporter was here, my question, excellent job, so...
So, okay. So, um, any other old business, new business going forward? Okay, I will entertain a motion.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Thank you, thank you, Jane.
So, the application starts tomorrow, right?
Yep.
All right, so... You can get them now if you want. I will give you, I can print out the form and get them now.
Yeah, no.
I'm, I'm gonna come in tomorrow. I'll come in tomorrow. Yeah, I'll come in tomorrow.
Do you wanna keep this again? Just the names and everything?
Sure.
My opinions have not changed.
All right, and I'm now going to send this mail to all of the counselors.
I will check with Jennifer about the reporting handle, what information, because maybe we can piece...
So, can you just hang on for one second? So, can you just hang on for one second, so I can get this email out? To Barbara? To Jo McCoy? You want Jo, Bones?
Bones, yeah.
Alright, so I'm, I, I usually go down thinking out of my head here, so Jennifer? Hayes? Nathan? Ziegler? Who sits next to him? Dan?
Salem.
Salem, yeah.
Dan Riss, Salem. Derby?
Hagan, Kowinski, Smith.
Dan.
McCoy.
Hagan, Kowinski, Kowinski. Kowinski. Oh, I'm gonna make a Polack out of you one of these days. Kowinski.
Kowinski.
There you go. Roll it off like Zagwatski.
That, see, Smith is handy.
Yeah, and yet it escapes people's minds.
That's true.
So simple, yet. Alright, Dan Hagan, let's see, let's see, Dan Riss, Salem, Dan. Jo's there, I don't need it, got it. Got Jen there. I need JP? And T?
I'd add the mayor.
And I'm gonna add the mayor, um...
Well, I got a run, but...
Okay, and I wanna CC Jane. Janes@easthampton.org. Who else? Oh, Melissa. And I don't know if I have, um... I'll call Melissa and ask her to send it to our auditor, Val. Because I don't think I have Val's email. Oh, I do. Valerie Bernier. Wow. Okay. Councilors and city officials. This is all done.
Good to have it done, right?
I know, yes, oh my goodness, you know, that's just like public safety, last night?
Yeah.
We got done with the meeting, I sent it right out. Gone. I just, I just don't, you know, I, I just, if I don't do it immediately, and I procrastinate, it's nothing.
Yeah.
Procrastination is not a good thing, in my world.
Oh, I think that's still on.
Oh, okay.